Now call the Thursday, April 3rd. Forest Lake Area Schools Regular School Board Meeting. Order, please join us while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Member Clark, will you please take the roll call to attendance?
Sure. Member Rebeline?
Here.
Member Corcoran?
Here.
Member Haglund?
Here.
Member Antonson is here. Member Castle?
Here.
Member Christensen?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
All right, all here. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting. Jenna?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is adopted. Brings us to scheduled and unscheduled visitors to start the listening session. Member Castle, do you have a report on the listening session?
It was, uh, it was very good. We, there's a lot of people were talking about the Constitution and some folks were talking about emails and board members, whether or not they replied to emails. And it was a very, it was very busy.
Yeah, it was, it was very busy. I sat in with Member Castle. I thought it was a good productive meeting, a lot of good dialogue going back and forth, some good expectations laid out on the table for all board members. And I for one think it's important that we respond to messages when we can. We do have a high volume of emails, so that is sometimes difficult. I don't have any commute cards this evening, so that will bring us to student achievement. We'll start with the Forest Lake Area High School SAD group. That would be Mr. Schwartz.
That's right. Hi, Keith Schwartz, SAD advisor. Been a teacher at Forest Lake for 18 years. Been running the SAD group over at the high school for about five or six years now. Very student-led groups. I'm just gonna turn it over to, to these four kids and they're gonna run you through a little program.
Hello. Well, we are SAD and that stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions. They changed that a few years ago, so if our slides load. Otherwise, we can do little intros. I'm Maddie McCafferty. I'm a senior on SAD. This is my second year and I'm one of the co-presidents.
I'm Eva Linder. I'm also a senior and I am co-president along with Maddie.
My name's Ryland Kissel. I'm also a senior and I'm a vice president.
My name's Pudge Zidler and I'm also a senior and I've been a member for two years.
Here's our little picture. This is actually Homecoming Royalty, all of the SAD members that were on it. So we just thought we would highlight that a lot of, we have like a lot of influence in our school and I guess that's pretty positive.
That's great. Our mission, so this is our mission statement we came up with. Our mission at SAD is to empower young people always to successfully confront the risks and pressures that challenge them throughout their daily lives. We strive to educate students about the results of their actions so they can make informed, positive choices and to promote a culture of safety and positive mental health. By fostering a community of peer support, we aim to reduce incidence of destructive behavior. And we do many things around our school to do all this.
So that's a mouthful. So we shorten it every year to do like a shorter, more like fun thing that goes on our poster. So this year is, don't let the situation get ugly. Say no, not maybe. So we did something around ugly sweaters. We wanted, we like to keep it fun and like something that connects to the students. So we just wanna do something a little different from past years. A lot of years we do something with our I Promise statement, which we will talk about later.
Yes, um, these are just a few of the examples of activities and events that we do. We sell ice cream. Um, Three Point Thursday, which is where we go around to classrooms with a little mobile basketball hoop and a basketball and we let kids try and throw a three-pointer and if they make it, they get a candy. And then Rupier Flots, Mock Car Crash, which is a very big deal for SAD. We put a lot of time and energy into that. Our I Promise Campaign and One Put Wednesday, which is similar to Three Point Thursday. We bring a mobile putter and if they can make the putt, they get a piece of candy.
And how that works is we send out, like Schwartz sends it out to teachers and he's like, if your class has been like doing really good recently or you wanna reward them in a way, let us know and we'll like, we put their name kind of in a drawing and then we choose the classes that the teachers nominate themselves. So it's not just like, oh, we go to like our favorite teacher. It's somebody who sees that their students are working hard and they think that they deserve something fun throughout the school. And we're always like doing new ideas with different things at lunches. Like Rupier Flots is a big hit this year. It's something that kids get like, they go to lunch and they see, oh, like something fun, something different, something to brighten their day. And we like put little messages on them, on the cups. We say like, SAD loves you, we hope you're having a great day. And then something that we didn't put on there is our Little Debbie Day. That's our biggest hit. We go around with five gallon buckets of Little Debbie's and all of them have little messages on them, little positive messages. And we go to the front doors of all those tools where the students enter and we just toss them a Little Debbie if they want. They can grab one off the table and we play music. So we get there pretty early at like 6:50 and we just start everybody's day off with like something fun and something positive, just to like brighten their week. And we like to do it when it's like a tougher week with like tests and stuff.
Yeah, or the week for spring break and stuff like that. We kinda don't do stuff during then. And then we come back and we have finals week and all that stuff and we try to bring a change of pace into students' days, try to bring them a smile maybe during those tougher weeks.
And then here's some of our pictures, um, that as you can see, they're laying down in our pile of empty Little Debbie boxes. Or our Three Point Thursday, we did it during one of our, like, we did it during one of our winter wonder weeks. So set like SAD and Student Council partnered and we had an activity during lunch that day so then they could come up to the table. So it's not just like SAD working alone. They work with other clubs. We've partnered with Rise for a few things. And so we just try to build a positive community within our school and we like to do that by working with other groups as well. And as you can see, there's some hairnets. We went to feed my starving children a couple times. And then the top right corner, we actually kabanging one time this year, which I think is fun. I like to organize people's groceries. And then the top left corner is everybody on their decision day last year. So that's all the SAD kids who graduated. So we're hoping to recreate that picture this year. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much for coming. Any questions, girls?
I have one question. Now, is the mock car crash every other year? Or is it coming up this year?
We filmed one last year and I was a part of it. I was one of the characters in it. But because of the incident that happened with the students being hit with the car, we decided that we didn't wanna release it 'cause it was supposed to be released that same week. And everything was supposed to happen that week. So we just felt that it was better for the families and the community not to release it. So we have one and I don't particularly know when it's going to come out.
Okay. And you guys are very inspirational. I can just see the faces on the students when they see you. You know, is it Little Debbie's or Rupier Flots? What, where do you get your budget for the things that you purchase?
Most of our budget comes from the past, um, things that we've done. So selling Rupier Flots, that money will be placed into Little Debbie Day. And then selling ice cream bars, that money will be put into whatever, Three Point Thursday.
And then we also got a donation from the Lions Club this year. I went to a Lions Club meeting and we were just like, hey, we do all this stuff for the school. Like we did, we fund all of the bracelets for our I Promise Campaign, like our sweatshirts and everything as well. So we were just like, if you would be willing to donate, 'cause all of the money that we make, we put into stuff that the students get. We don't keep any of it. So it all goes into the Little Debbie's that we give out, the bracelets we give out, stuff from Mock Car Crash. So we don't keep any of it at SAD. So we just, we went to a meeting, we're like, hey, would you like to partner with us and donate to help us make things possible at our school?
That's great. So you solicit some donations too. Well, you're very creative with everything you do and if you ever need anything from us, be sure to let you, let us know. We'd be willing to help and I'm so appreciative of all the work you do. That creates that climate for the SAD. And I love your new slogan.
How many, how many students are in the, you know, organizations?
A lot.
Is there a lot?
Yes. Yes.
So all different?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
And we keep it just juniors and seniors. So we keep it upperclassmen only, just so we can kind of have like a, not a senior leadership, but more of a senior leadership, I guess. And then for me, like I knew about it right away and I knew from my freshman year that I wanted to be a part of it 'cause all of the kids who were setting the best example within our school were a part of it. So it's kinda like it builds this great reputation. So then when you get to your junior and senior year, you're like, that is something that I wanna be a part of.
Wow. How much time do you think you spend on that? I mean, is that, is it, I'm sure you're involved in a lot of other things too. I mean, seeing that, you know, sports and, and other organizations too. Do you feel like, I mean, is it, I'm sure your, your weeks are busy. So do you feel like it's, you're balancing a lot with what you're already in or?
I feel like it's a good balance. We don't meet every week. So that's very helpful, but when we do meet, we get a lot done. And then when you're in something specific like the Rupier Flots or the I Promise Campaign, you're obviously putting more work into it, but then it's like a select committee.
Yeah, so we put ourselves into different committees based off of what you wanna take part in. So if people wanna do the Little Debbie Day, they'll sign up for that. If they wanna take part in the Mock Car Crash, they'll sign up for that. Like you don't have to do everything, but you can take part in things that you feel you wanna take part in.
That's great. With eighty-two people, that's fabulous. That's a great group. That's wonderful. Do you have an end of year kinda party for the group?
For seniors.
Yeah.
Yes, senior breakfast.
Oh, good.
Celebrate the end of the year. And a lot of us who are seniors joined our junior year, so we've been together for two years. So it's kinda just like a one last hurrah.
Well, that's wonderful.
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming and sharing.
Of course.
Yes, thank you.
Member Castle?
So when you have like, for instance, Little Debbie Day, do you bring a donation bucket everywhere you go?
Nope. We just hand them out.
I consider that. Some people might donate. Hey, I'm getting some, I give some back.
Yeah. We do that for a lot of our other things. Little Debbie Day is kinda just like in the morning and stuff.
Yeah, donation bucket. Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Member Christensen?
I just think what you just said was so great about how you knew that, how did you say it? That this group makes good decisions and that this is the group that you wanna be part of. I think that's really awesome and speaks a lot to what you guys are doing. So that's, that's, that's your, um, your new theme right there, whatever. How you just said that was really great. How you know that this is a group, that the kids are gonna make good decisions and this group has a really good reputation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
All right, Member Antonson?
Well, I was gonna ask, do you guys do anything specifically around prom or homecoming? Did I miss, okay, what do you?
Our I Promise Campaign, we didn't touch on it fully, but it's like, we have a big poster and last year we had one of our own students make it and it says, I promise to get home safely. And students pledge to make smart decisions around prom. And then we have bracelets that like say, I promise. Last year ours, we actually changed it to the slogan on the back of Ryland's sweatshirt. And we said, be safe, someone loves you. So we had felt bracelets that people, if they pledged to get home safely, they got a bracelet saying, be safe, someone loves you. And it's just to kinda create that mentality that like, we want you to make smart dishes, decisions, we want you to make it home safe. So we do that. And then we also do a seatbelt challenge where we have students get in a car. They have to buckle a seatbelt and then they have to get out and go to each spot in the car as fast as they can, buckling the seatbelt, just to like, we want you to be buckled in your car. We want you to be making smart decisions. Like prom is obviously a stressful time, but we want you to be home safe 'cause somebody does love you.
Yeah.
Great.
Member Castle?
Do you, so for instance, in the school, if you observe a student being destructive, so to speak, to another student, would you address that student and perhaps recommend a different approach for them?
Yes. I would say without a doubt personally, I, I feel like being a co-president of SAD gives me the opportunity to do so. And I, I don't know, I feel like being a mentor to the younger students that are making those destructive decisions, it's, I don't know, it's an opportunity I love having.
Yeah. And I just think with all of the other activities I've done this year with Student Council and outside of Student Council and getting to hear so many student stories of our high school, without a doubt I have to say something 'cause you never know what that student is going through. And obviously, we're wearing our SAD sweatshirts, a lot of people know who we are. So just being that like person that they can go to and know that like we'll say something is something I think is very important.
Love us. True leaders. Yeah, true leaders of the school.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to just thank you for the work that you guys do every year. A lot of times when kids hear things from parents or teachers or administrators, it's preaching. You know, we tell you, hey, go be safe at prom, make good choices. It's mom and dad preaching to them. When it comes from the students, when it comes from their peers saying, you know, somebody loves you, somebody cares about you, they want you to be safe, they want you to make good decisions, it hits a different nerve with kids. And I think that's important. And I know I appreciated it with my older two kids that are now graduated when they went to prom and they got the messages from your group. That was just reinforcing the messages that we were giving them. So I'd like to thank you for that. And the other thing I wanted to mention here is, I think the mock car crash is really important. I think it's extremely powerful and I know it's a lot of work. And I know last year we had some events that really hit close to home and you put in all the work and the prep for that and then you didn't do it, but we had a real life example and the same message was delivered. So I don't wanna overlook the work that you guys did that you put into it and then you had to step back and not do it. But I do think it's a very strong message to, to all kids and to all families and that there's a lot of importance behind it. So I hope it's a program that continues. But I appreciate the maturity being able to step back last year and realize that that wasn't the time for that message to get reinforced because it had already been delivered. So thank you again for coming in tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
All right, maybe we should start having Little Debbie's here in our boardroom. That brings us to Columbus Elementary. Principal Fox.
Well, that was tough to follow. That's wonderful, for sure.
We set the agenda up like that.
You did. Thanks for doing that. Good evening, Board Chair, Mr. Rebeline, Superintendent of Forest Lake Area Schools, Dr. Massey, and the rest of our devoted school board members. My name is Neil Fox, Deputy Principal of Columbus Elementary School. To my left is Brittany Jakubiac and she works as my Academic Support Specialist at Columbus and also is our internal coach for Reading Core and Math Core. And then Tina Grimes is to my right and she's currently working with my fourth, fifth, and sixth graders as a math tutor through AmeriCore at Columbus Elementary School. Goals for tonight. First, we wanna showcase how Math Core is working at Columbus and how it has positively, positively impacted our student growth in the area of math. Also to provide some insight to you on Math Core, what it is, how it works, what it looks like, how much it costs to run, and then a little bit of showcasing some of our student data currently at Columbus.
So I think if we could jump forward to a couple slides to what is it? Can you do that? So again, I'm Brittany Jakubiac and I'm gonna talk a little bit about the program itself. It's a federally funded program where the candidates are recruited either by us or by Math Core itself. Math Core trains the tutors and provides schools with these tutors to us, either on an full-time basis or a part-time basis depending upon our grant and our need at the school. These tutors then, they implement evidence-based interventions either in a K-3 model or a 4-6 model. It really goes to 48, but in our building, elementary building for 4-6, that need additional support. So Tina is our internal Math Core and so she just provides interventions to just 4-6. We have a separate person who does K-3. How it works, the tutoring interventions are in addition to core math instruction so it doesn't replace the math instruction. Students are pulled out of the classroom and work in a small room that's in a common hallway with our Reading Core tutors, which I think you heard about last month, about the Reading Core program. And so then because they're in close contact, they are able to talk about students and data in, in close contact. So the goal of the program is to raise math levels so that students are on track to meet or exceed seasonal benchmarks. So this program is really a partnership with us and their goal is to support the academic success of our students. So how it works, it is all evidence-based interventions that we do. The K-3 program differs slightly from the 4-8 program. K-3 are met daily with the interventionists. They get 20-minute sessions every day. That differs from the 4-8. We have to meet 90 minutes in a week period. Now, with the elementary schedule, right now we have A through F days. So I was able to work it with Math Core that we do, whether it's 20 minutes a day, there's some groups I do 20 minutes a day with the 4-6 kids. Some of them I do every other day for 30 minutes and some of them are every three days for 45 minutes. So in the six-day scheduling block with our elementary schools, I see them 90 minutes within that six-day window. Who's eligible for this? If they are below target base on the state proficiency. So the K-3 program primarily, primarily looks at the FastBridge data. The 4-8 program, technically we look at MCAs, that's the first step of their scores. We also take into account the FastBridge scores and stuff like that. So anyone that does not meet or partially meets is eligible for the program. Throughout the program, there's continual check-ins. So they're called stop and checks or with the K-3, they have to do a unit mastery test. So what's really nice and what I've enjoyed doing with this program, so this is my second year doing it, we're not on a schedule. Yes, we have a schedule of order that we do things in, but it's not a rush. It's strictly based on how the students do. So if they're not getting a topic, we can stay on it until they master it. So it's really nice that we go at their pace. And in the 4-6 program, we literally have one, sometimes four stop and checks within one unit and they have to pass the unit to go on to the next one. So even if one student in the group of two to three students doesn't do it, you wait back, they get to help kinda be the teachers if they understand it. They get to put it in their kid's language and then also be the teacher then. So this is just some of the, next few slides are some of the topics that we cover. This is a very broad overview and you'll see that a lot of them are the same. It does increase in difficulty. So you add on skills. It might be counting or representing numbers, one through 20 for kindergarten, for example, and then higher up as you go through the other grades. So yes, the, the overall topic is the same, but it adds on an intensity and just the skills that they should be able to do within those topics. Same, this is just some of the 4-5 skills as well. It, it goes into a lot more detail. Some of them you might just be learning the concept of fractions, what is the numerator, what is the denominator? When you get to the upper levels, they're doing things like adding and subtracting those fractions, they're multiplying those fractions and it gets far more in-depth. Same with grade six. Grade six is very different than the 4-5. I am only familiar myself with the 4-6. I don't go beyond since Columbus only goes through sixth grade. But this is the curriculum that's different than the four and five year old, or four and fifth grade. With it though, I will say, Math Core follows the Common Core curriculum since it's used throughout the country. It is nice, it doesn't necessarily follow ours exactly, but what I have found in the two years I've been doing this, it follows either before or after. So maybe in the classroom, they teach it first and then I get to hit it as a review. Or sometimes in a very few cases, I'm the first time they're seeing a concept and then they have an idea when they get to the classroom. So then we move into the cost of the program. Buildings need to provide tutors with a space to work and a laptop. Space is undefined. It could be a shared space or it could be a private room depending upon what's available at the building. Buildings also need to provide time to the academic support specialists who conduct fidelity checks. These are just some of the things we do. We do two fidelity checks a month to ensure that the tutors are doing the research-based interventions correctly. We help the tutors analyze the data that they are collecting. We attend monthly meetings with the Math Core program managers and we work on building their schedules. So those are some of the things. This past, we've had, Columbus has had Math Core tutors for two consecutive years. This past year there was a $1,500 per tutor fee that our PTO funded. Moving forward, it's a little bit unclear whether that fee is going to continue, but we do have our full support of our PTO. If that is the case, they're willing to continue that funding for us. Now getting into some of the stats. So this is results from K-3. So this is our first year at Columbus to have K-3. This has benchmark assessment. So what Math Core has done is, three times a year, it follows the same schedule that the FastBridge does, but three times a year, we give a Math Core assessment. This Math Core assessment looks at what the kids should know by the end of that grade level. So the first time I gave the Math Core assessment and I was looking at it and the kids were getting zero to six percent sometimes on this, the very first test in the fall and I was like, oh boy. But they told me that's what they should know by the end of that grade level. So of course, if you're just starting sixth grade, you're not expected to know all of that. So this is the same thing. This is some of the K-3 results. So showing the ones on the left in the light blue are from when they took the assessment in the fall. And the dark blue is growth from the winter assessment that was given shortly after Christmas break. The information on the right-hand side, it says 62 is the number of students that are enrolled. That, how that's worded is deceiving. That 62 students are the number of students that were given the original assessment. Obviously, in our schedule and the teacher's schedules, we don't have the ability to take 62 students, especially K-3 can only meet in pairs. You can't have more than two students at a time working with a tutor. It's just not possible to get that many in, even though those are the amount of students that need the help. So currently, of those 62, we have been able to hit 28 of them with interventions. Of those 28, 26 of them have demonstrated growth. So whether, this is strictly based on the Math Core assessment, not looking at their FastBridge scores. This is data directly provided by Math Core. So 26 of those students have demonstrated growth and some of them have seen growth even over 20% of their score, just from the fall to the winter assessment. This is Holly, she is our K-3 tutor. Right now, as of this point in time, she is seeing 25 students. This year alone, she has had over 1,000 minutes of tutoring with students. Her total tutoring, she was tutoring at a different facility before, so she does have additional minutes with that. It's kinda hard to see on the, a chart in the left-hand corner. Currently, she sees 24% of her caseload is kindergarten students, 24% is first grade students, 16% is second grade, and she has 36% of her caseload is third graders. We try and get it as even as possible, but it all comes down to scheduling and when we're able to pull the students from their classroom. This is the 4-6 information. So quite a bit of growth from the beginning of the year to their middle year. It's very nice to see after doing this for two years, the amount of growth you see. One of the stories I really like to tell, last year I had a student, he scored the ninth lowest of the Columbus sixth graders on his fall FastBridge test. And somehow, some way, he was the top scorer on his FastBridge test for math at the spring benchmark. It's amazing to see the growth and confidence that these kids have. Sometimes, so with 4-6, I can have up to three students. So it differs from K-3 that I can have up to one additional student. They're not afraid to ask questions in a small group setting like that. So you can slow it down to their pace, you can make sure they understand it, and then they have a safe space that they can answer questions. I know I have several of my sixth grade students that have come in before or after school or when I don't have a group and they've been working on their MCA practice. And it's questions that they wouldn't have necessarily asked in class, but they feel comfortable then coming down, hey, can you help me through some of these MCA test questions? So this is my second year. In my two years of doing this, I have helped 59 students and currently I have had over 100,000 minutes. That number is still based on, even if I have a 20-minute session, it counts as 60 minutes 'cause I have three students in each of my groups. So that is how that number is calculated. I currently have 34% of my caseload as fourth graders, 39% is fifth graders, and 27% of my caseload is sixth graders. So this next slide is directly from AmeriCore, which is the umbrella term for Reading Core and Math Core. And so here we can see how many members are at each building. This might not be accurate as of today, but this is the most recent data they gave us as of a couple weeks ago. So currently you can see there Columbus Elementary has two Reading Core tutors, one K-3 Math Core tutor and one four through six Math Core tutor. And then you can see what the other buildings have.
There are some not applicables there, because, for instance, Forest Lake Elementary does not have K three students. So, that's why some of those say not applicable. But, it is, has a heavy presence in our school district, and we are really fortunate that we have a partnership with them, because as Tina has spoken too, we have just seen tremendous growth in our students, both reading core and MathCore.
And then finally, the investment in value for all of our students in Forest Lake area schools, whether it be in math and reading, is extraordinary. So, this just talks about currently, the investment this year. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty members, four hundred and seventy-six students that are impacted across all of our elementary schools. There's the hours that are put into it. The equivalent investment would be four hundred and twenty-five K year-to-date. By the end of the year, it'll be seven hundred thousand K by the end of the year. And then over on the right-hand side, you can see all the previous years to that. We've had sixty-two members serving one hundred and eighty-six terms, roughly fifteen hundred students. And over a five-year span in which AmeriCore's been in our schools, both math and reading, that's an equivalent investment of over $2.1 million invested.
Because not only does AmeriCore pay our salaries, but they also provide benefits to any full-time. They pay a hundred percent of our benefits. So, that is taken into account in that investment.
And at the end of the day, it's the people that are, it's the, it's Holly who's not here tonight. It's Tina. It's, it's Brittany that's overseeing the program. And when you come into the building, and you see kids excited to go work with Holly and Tina, or when I need a break from my job to go down there, that's where I go. That's where I hang out. And those kids are, are thriving in that environment. And so, the investment is rich, but the connections that are being made in the school building and making kids feel good about their growth, both in math and reading, is very evident. And so, and it's the people that are doing it that make that work.
So, that is all we have.
Member Christensen.
I had a question. Can you talk a little bit about how, when you say that you pull the kids out of class, so what are they missing when you're taking them on?
It's typically target time. On a very, so we don't ever pour them, pull them out of the core instruction. Fourth grade, what we have done the past two years, and that's currently the only grade we do it in, we pull them out of the last ten minutes of their math class. And when we pull them out of the last ten minutes, they're not missing the core instruction. It's usually homework time at, at that point in time. And at this point, those are some of the lowest students who are having a difficult time with the homework portion anyway. So, the teacher works with that student, and they have a little less of the homework on that, so we can fill in the gaps of some of the other stuff they don't understand. Target time is the main portion. We create with some of the scheduling otherwise, but they're not missing any of the literacy, any of the math, or we work really hard not to miss any of the science and social studies either. If anything, it's the last five minutes of that that they may miss to get into group.
And we do work directly with the classroom teachers to ensure that if it is not at that target time, that it is a time that they, to have said, yep, this is an okay time for this particular student to miss. And if at any time that changes, that's part of my job of working with schedules, and we would not pull a student from a time where they're missing any core instruction.
And what I'd really like to is, they don't, if the class is getting to do something fun, if they're getting to do a class party or something, even though it's during the scheduled time, even when we had the really nice weather in February, March, if their classes went outside, we still let them be kids, and we still let them go to that. So, they're not having to go, oh, I have to go see Mrs. Grimes, and my class is doing something fun. We don't want them to miss out on that stuff either. Thank you.
Member Tyson.
So, I have a couple of questions. Do you see in the data correlation between FastBridge and what data you're getting from the AmeriCore or the MathCore? Is, like, the scores go up in FastBridge, they go up in AmeriCore? Do you see correlation with that?
We definitely do see some correlation. It's not always exact, right? We also see correlation with the MCAs. That's another big thing that we're always looking at, those three pieces of information. But, definitely, there is a direct correlation in the increase in the MathCore, their FastBridge scores, and their MCAs. I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that.
You know, we're in the middle of the fourth day right now of the reading MCAs, so the elementary math MCAs don't take place until the following week. But, if I were to reflect back on last year of seventy-nine percent of the kids in third grade were proficient in mathematics, that's a direct result of our core work, or AmeriCore work that was going on in math. No doubt about it.
That's terrific. I think there can be a lot of stigma around math, where kids just, I know my daughter felt that she just wasn't good at it. And when she got some of that individualized attention, it just went up. And I think that, that's a testament to the work that's going on now, that they get that boost, they get that one-on-one. I like hearing how the program doesn't make them to speed up and miss concepts and end up having holes here and there. They get to go at their own pace, and I think that's really important. And one quick question, do we have capacity for all the students that, do you have capacity for all the students in the program?
Unfortunately, no. So, we look at everyone with MCAs. We factor in the FastBridge. But then, also at the beginning of the year, well, in my case, I typically start working on it in the spring for the following year, after we get the test scores in. And we sit down with, like, this year's teachers I will sit down with at the end of the year and say, who do you see struggling in the classroom? Who do you recommend? Because, next fall, I start usually the second, third week of school, I start with the assessment, so I can get rolling on interventions. And the new teachers don't necessarily know their capabilities yet. So, I specifically work with their past year's teacher, see who they recommend should get a spot, since we do have limited spots. And then, again, we meet in the fall before we do fully put those people in the spots, to see who best we can serve and how many we can do.
Wow. And it's just terrific how this is impacting our students, and I appreciate all your hard work. I just have a quick, another question, if you bear with me. With fidelity checks, and we know that those are really critical to any type of program like this, what exactly are you looking for? And does the criteria for it come from AmeriCore, or do, do you develop that criteria for those fidelity checks?
AmeriCore provides the fidelity check pieces based on the actual intervention that they're doing, performing. They came up with a checklist. They train the tutors in these areas. The tutors have scripts too, and they are able to deviate from the script, but the script is there in case they need it. And then, we are looking for certain pieces to make sure that it's done with fidelity. So, and they can see the fidelity checklist as well. I mean, we don't want to hide that from them. But, it's, it comes from them, and it comes off of their training, directly from their training. So, that's something that AmeriCore does provide.
And terrific. And we hear that they're so highly trained. I was just wanting a little information.
And the fidelity checks are done at least monthly, and so both Brittany, the internal coach, and our coaching specialist directly from AmeriCore sit in on those fidelity checks.
Well, thank you.
Gail, your second question. We are data-rich in the springtime?
Okay.
With preschool being in the building, I have a pretty good reflection of where these kids are at coming into K. So, in the springtime, we spend a lot of time of already putting our groups together. So, we hit the door on September 6th with these kids. We're not wasting six weeks. We're getting, we're getting right into this on day one of school.
That is fabulous. And so important, right? Hit the ground running.
Member Castle.
In the curriculum information I saw, I did not see multiplication tables.
So, we don't. So, I can't speak to the third-grade curriculum, since I just do the four-six. We have one multiplication table that we help the students fill out. So, part of what I didn't mention in the presentation either, every week, we have to do at least twenty minutes of fact fluency with students. Some of that is done on a computer that, the computer system that MathCore provides. And so, they're able to track what problem do they consistently get wrong, which one do they get right? Other times, we play card games for math. So, it's adding and subtracting. It's a headband game where the groups have to put it up there, and they have to figure out what their card is based on the total I give them and things like that. So, every week, whether you are in K three or four-six, you have to be working on the fact fluency. The multiplication that we do, so in the, in the, well, fourth and fifth grade units, the multiplication starts with strategies. Okay, you've been counting by twos since you were this big. So, it gives them strategies. Okay, if it's times two, we can figure this out. If it's times five, you can figure it out. Then, it goes on to give other strategies, like the nine trick and things like that. So, once you go through all the strategies of each number that you can go through, then we fill out a multiplication table as we've been doing that, so they can see it. I would say, most often, I don't let the students use that as we're going through the multiplication, because I want them to remember the strategy. So, as we're working on the multiplication, I have them, okay, well, maybe you don't remember what seven times six is, but seven times five is an easier one. And so, we can do that, and then add the other seven. So, we're doing those strategies and working on that, instead of focused on just be finding the answer on the multiplication table.
Memorizing is what I remember.
I think they call it dinosaur math. That's what my kids used to say about me, so.
So, is it a matter of space, or a matter of teachers, coaches available to come into the schools that?
I think two things are our biggest hindrance. One is the amount of tutors we have. If we could, I mean, MathCore would provide us as many tutors as we could fit in the building. It's a matter of finding good quality ones to fill those spots. Two, scheduling. I'm limited based on the number of students I can take, simply because I don't pull them from their core classes.
Right. But if you have, if there were more teachers, coaches coming in and available to come in, then more students that need it could get it. And then, I know Wyoming, we just talked with the Wyoming principal the other day, but the, their, Lynwood and Scandia don't have any of this. Is that because they have programs kind of like Wyoming? Do you know?
They have their reading core, and MathCore is, is coming along.
So, there's an application process. We've already filled it out for next year. We have to look at our data this year, determine, do we have enough students who we think would qualify for a tutor, or one and a half tutors, or two tutors, and then apply. So, we have been, we've had reading core tutors longer than we have math, because we just kind of gently eased into what does this program mean, and how is it going to work for us. So, part of it is, you have to apply for that, and then they tell you whether you were accepted or not. But, you do also have to have space. You have to get the tutors. Like I said, we try to find ours in-house as much as we can. But, some of the positions, some of these schools may have applied, and nobody took the job. Also, sometimes tutors leave. Things happen. And they've had a tutor in place, and they lost that tutor for some reason or another. I know that some of the buildings have had that this year too, and now currently don't have a MathCore tutor when they did in the fall.
All right. Member Christensen.
I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this program is federally funded through grants. So, hopefully, I mean, this is such a wonderful program and such great results, evidence-based and everything. I mean, I hope this is able to continue.
We haven't heard anything. We were just on an AmeriCore core day meeting we have three times a year, and so far, nothing. When cuts started to be made, they were hearing initial rumblings, but now those seem to have died away. It seems as of right now, the program is still good.
Member Castle.
Is there a limit to, for instance, the reading is a four-year, and that's all they can do is the same situation applied, four years?
And it's four years across the board. So, like, I can't do four years of math and then go to four years of reading. So, it's four years, even if I had served in the Peace Corps, those years would count towards this as well.
Member Parker.
No, I was just going to ask about, is there students, I mean, you, I'm sure for the testing part, does any student, like, they start in the fall, do they make enough progress that they're done before the end of the year, that another student may start? Is there any of those students' opportunities, or is it, is that rare?
Great question. K three, they have a lot more opportunity to add more. So, K three, if the tutor feels that they are understanding the concept, they can give them the unit mastery test right away. And if they pass that, they can move on to the next unit. And if, again, even if on the day one, if the, if the tutor feels, because we have to seriously do every unit in order, and on day one, if the tutor says, I think you can do this, and they give them the unit mastery, they can move along. Four-six is not so accommodating. So, in order to be out of MathCore, they have to get a seventy-five percent on their winter benchmark. So, the earliest I could exit someone is in the January benchmarking window, and they have to get seventy-five. So, of the thirty-three students I had last year, only one of those passed it. They got a seventy-six percent. Everyone else was slightly under or considerably under still. The decision was made at that point in time, because you're halfway through the unit, I couldn't move a student into that spot. We were too far along. So, we just kept that student, and they finished the year with the same program.
But, like, for the kid, the younger student, but there is opportunities there?
Yes. Yeah. It's just much harder with the four-six, but there's also a lot more in-depth material we cover in the four-six.
I'm just curious about opportunities. Thank you.
And even if one of the pair of students in K three exits, we can bring in a second student right away.
That's great. Just want to make sure everyone has, if they have more chances.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. Thank you guys very much for helping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to positive happenings. Does anybody have anything for positive happenings? Member Tyson?
Went and saw a year with Frog and Toad. I think Member Christensen was there. It was very, very good. I honestly thought I was at the Minneapolis Children's Theater. The vocals were incredible, the set, the costumes. It was so endearing. So, kudos to them. That is a lot of work to put those on with all the staging and the costumes and the rehearsals, but it was really, really. And they had so much fun doing it afterwards. They were just like, so electric, just talking about what their roles and how they got them and how they liked them. So, good job. I was so impressed. It's nothing like when my daughter was in one, because we had the rented stage at Century Junior High that was bounced around. And so, this was a true phenomenal production. Another thing I want to mention quick, and I know the community ed will be on the, on the agenda here, but our community ed book came out, and I wanted to mention that I was recently at the senior, senior center in Forest Lake, and she said that these, they come in with these for coffee, and they talk about courses they can take and things that they can do. And I thought that was really something. But, what I want to mention out of here, because I think it's really important to note, and I know, you know, groceries are high, and things are really high, and people are struggling in our district right now, is that we have the community closet for our whole, as a resource for our whole entire district. And what goes along with that is baby basics and the family resource cupboard. So, they're always looking for donations. So, if you want to donate to something that benefits our entire district, you can donate to the family resource cupboard, which is just baby basics. And just so everybody remembers that if people need help, we can refer them to call into our community closet. We have a lot of great things there, and it's a terrific resource, and not many districts have one. So, I hope we all remember to share that information with people in the district, and I'm so proud of that. And I'm proud of this book. It's awesome. I am biased, but when I go to other districts, I check them out and pick them up and look at them. And this is like, really top-notch work. So, that concludes my positive happenings. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Entonson.
Can Jill go?
Oh, Member Christensen. Yeah, go ahead.
I did, a few, quite a few things have been going on, but I just wanted to highlight, on March 21st, Member Rebeline, Chair Rebeline and myself were there, along with Dr. Massey, and, and maybe he'll speak to it a little bit more. But, I just wanted to say, on March 21st, there was a meeting with city mayors and administrators from our district. And that was a really great meeting. I'd never been to that before. And it was really wonderful. Dr. Massey gave a presentation on the redistricting boundaries we're doing with our elementary school. And then, one by one, the cities went around and talked about what was going on with them, and which was important. So, we heard about, you know, different road improvements and different, you know, housing developments going in. But, I do want to say to Dr. Massey's credit that they were so complimentary. Every city- But I do want to say to Dr. Massey's credit that they were so complimentary, every city, about how we are going about our redistricting and our boundaries. And so complimentary about how transparent it is and how ahead of this we are as a district. Lots of references to how things didn't, you know, go quite as well with the neighboring district. And so just kudos to Dr. Massey. And I was really happy to be invited to attend. It was a really worthwhile meeting. Thank you.
And to add to that, they had some really good feedback for how we can tweak those boundaries even a little bit better to prepare for some of the developments that they had in the works that we didn't know about already, because they were so new. So that was really valuable for everybody involved. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I have a fifth grader, and he was, he went through the BizTown experience. And I will say that about two weeks beforehand, before he knew that he was going to be the CFO, he was like, I just, I don't want to do that. He didn't want to go. And I was like, why? And, you know, then he found out he was a CFO, and he was like, yeah, okay, fine. And, you know, once there, and he tried to keep the parents away from where their kids are in their little stores. It was just kind of really fun to watch the kids that I was working with. You know, one of them, he goes, well, what's this R&amp;D mean? Because he didn't realize that he wasn't a research and development scientist. And so they just, I think, had a really good time, even if they weren't expecting it, because they got to experience something that, you know, they might not. He goes, the one kid with the science, he goes, this is actually really cool, this science stuff. I'm like, yeah, it can be really cool. So I think, I just want to, JP, I know you have a lot to do with that, and you talk about it. People might not always know what it is, if you don't have the kids going through it. And I think the kids have a really good time with that. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. All right, well, on the topic of chief financial officers, that brings us to reports. Eiler's Public Finance Advisors, pre-sale report for bond sales. Director Renberg-Aide.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board. I'm here today with Jody Lethbock. We're going to walk through our pre-sale report. Back in August, due to the LTFM and our levy that we certified, we, the Board approved the sale of the bonds that we're selling. And so tonight, we're kicking back off with it to the actual sale point. So a little bit more time than usual between those two items. So bringing everybody on the Board up to speed with everything with the pre-sale report. So I'll turn it over to Jody.
Great, thank you, Chrissy. Good evening. I went to BizTown with my kids when they were younger, and I remember the accountant complaining, because everybody else was on break, and he was still trying to finish up his work. And I thought, well, it's kind of how life is. Maybe discourage one little guy from being, growing up to be an accountant someday. But anyway, it was an awesome experience. So thanks for having me here tonight. This is just an informational report. As Chrissy mentioned, you already approved moving forward with the bond sale. But now we're closer to the date when the bonds will be sold. So we thought we would just give some updated estimates and talk a little bit more about the next steps in the process. So I will highlight some information included on the pre-sale report, and I'll reference the page numbers as we go through. On the first page, you'll see the dollar amount of the bond issue that was approved last summer at $10,750,000, financing deferred maintenance projects that were included in the tenure plan that was approved last year. And also, the projects were approved by the Board and by the Commissioner of Education. So this program started about 10 years ago. Really, the purpose of the program is to protect the investment that the taxpayers have made in your facilities. So the facilities throughout your school district, much as your own, much like your own home. Roofs need to be replaced, parking lots need to be fixed, all those kinds of things. So that was the reason that the program was put in place after a governor's task force studied this whole issue. So we're grateful to have this program, because we know how important it is to be able to, just as you do in your own life and your work life, then protect the investment in these facilities. So the term of this bond issue is pretty short, seven years and eight months. And then you'll notice that you're participating in the state credit enhancement program. That was part of the resolution that you approved last summer. That means that the state will make a payment on your bonds. Should you not be able to make a payment, they guarantee that. And the, there's no cost to participate in that program. So it's a great program that our state has in place. You'll see in the ratings section there, then you'll have two ratings on this bond issue. The first is a state credit enhanced rating. Our state currently has a triple-A rating, the highest that Moody's assigns. Under the state credit enhancement program, they will assign you one notch down at a double-A1. You'll also have your school district underlying rating, which most recently is a single-A3. And we'll be going through the rating process for the rating agency for Moody's to take a look at that again. On page two then, a couple of things on that, the method of sale. We solicit competitive bonds for the sale of your bonds. Whoever gets the lowest interest rate is who then you would award to on the day of the sale. We'll likely be going to get a premium, an amount above the par amount of the bonds. And I'll show you how that looks on the schedules when we get into those. And then we're constantly reviewing your existing debt for any opportunities to refinance, or what's called in the public finance world, refund those bonds. And so when those opportunities come up, we definitely make you aware of those. And then a few regulatory issues, starting at the bottom of page two with continuing disclosure. Continuing on page three with arbitrage monitoring, investment of bond proceeds. We do have an investment team that could help you with investing bond proceeds, if you would like to use us for that service. And then, under other service providers, we're working in conjunction with your bond counsel, which is Dorsey and Whitney, paying agent Bond Trust Services Corporation, and then Moody's as the rating agency. So next, on page four, is the debt issuance schedule. So the Board did approve the resolution last summer on August 1st. So that's why there's no additional action needed tonight. We are presenting the pre-sale report. We will be going through the review of the official statement, which is like the prospectus that goes out to investors during the week of April 14th, and also having the conference call with the rating agency then. We'll then distribute the official statement. We'll receive the proposals on the day of your May 1st Board meeting and present those to you that evening. And then scheduled to close on the bonds on May 22nd. So that's when the district will have the funds for the startup of the summer construction process. And that's why we're at this timing right now. So in terms of the financial schedules, page five is our sources and uses. So for the $10,750,000 of par, you'll see that we have about a $500,000 re-offering premium. That is an estimate. We don't, that is not guaranteed. We don't know exactly what that will be. But based upon the bids that we've been receiving from underwriters recently, they've been giving us an amount above the par amount of the issue at about that size for this, for the size of a bond issue. And then we'll earn some investment earnings on your bond proceeds, because of course, you'll get the bond proceeds all on May 22nd. But you'll spend those bond proceeds over time as you, as you finish the project. So that's an estimate of the investment earnings, which you will also use towards project costs. And then, underwriters discount, the compensation that the underwriter will take as part of this bond issue, legal and fiscal costs. So giving a net available for project costs of $11,147, roughly. And the initial deposit of the construction fund will be just a little above $11 million is what our best estimate is at this point in time. Page six then is the detailed principal and interest schedule. And again, pretty short bond issue, you'll be repaying this pretty quickly. Page seven is our detailed long-term debt and capital levies plan. So this is not all of the school district levies, but is a big share of the school district levies. And this is the schedule that we use on a long-term basis to ensure that we're maintaining a level or declining tax rate unless your voters approve an increase. So you'll see that we have bond issues scheduled for the foreseeable future to continue to finance projects as part of this program. And then, the interest rate that we're assuming on this particular bond issue is in the upper left-hand corner at just under 4%, at 3.95%. We've been continuing to get a lot of interest, a lot of demand in municipal bonds. The market's been a little volatile, as you might know. So this is our best estimate at this point in time as to where we think the interest rate will be. And then, the schedule's set up to show your levy and fiscal years over time, your levies on your existing bonds, some capital levies. And then, the facilities maintenance funding for this, for this bond issue and future bond issues, ultimately getting to that far right-hand side where we're showing the levies and tax rates. And then if you flip to page eight, this gives you a nice visual of those estimated tax rates. And again, maintaining a nice level or declining tax rate. We have some step downs to provide you with some future capacity for any additional needs that you might have in the future. So that is everything that I have to get you back up to speed where we're at now in, at this point in the process. We'll be back after May meeting then with the results from the bond sale.
Thank you very much for coming in. I'll kick us off here with a question. In your best estimate, as I realize that's what this is, does the current market volatility, is it beneficial for the bond sale, neutral?
Generally, it's beneficial. So when we see unrest in the economy, and when people are uncertain about where things are at, they generally like to have investments that are safe and secure. So we generally see more demand and sometimes a little bit lower interest rate because of that increased demand in the municipal bond market. So often, it's kind of the opposite effect, not always, but generally speaking, that's the case. If people are uncertain about where things are going to be in the stock market, they have a flight to safety. And this is about as safe and secure as you can get, especially because of the state credit enhancement program.
Would there be an advantage then to try to accelerate some of these dates?
Not necessarily, because we do try to time the funds to match up with when you're going to be doing the projects. And then the interest, interest rate clock would start ticking. So you'd be paying interest for longer than you really need to.
All right, great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
No, I just, I agree with everything you said, because that's what our investors have been telling us to, exactly, about the bonds. So, and I think the timing is perfect with the summer projects. For sure. Perfect. Thank you for coming.
We do look forward also to the Moody's rating call. So we know that our low fund balance has played into that call in the past. So looking forward to having that call this year and talking through the little bit of the improved fund balance and then our future with that, so.
All right, Member Tyson?
So that was my question. You addressed the ratings. So we expect our rating to go up then? What are you expecting?
They don't necessarily move that quickly.
No. A little more quick to downgrade than to upgrade. So generally, then generally, they do like to see a pattern of three to five years of improvement.
Oh, okay.
But you have to start somewhere.
You have to start somewhere, and they will be encouraged by that, for sure. That will be, that will be positive to be able to communicate that news with them, yes.
So level would be a good expectation? They wouldn't have a reason to downgrade when we're making improvements?
Yeah, I don't see any big red flags, other than they have definitely been concerned about the fund outs.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. That brings us to workshops and conferences. Does anybody have anything for workshops and conferences?
Thank you, Jody, for coming.
All right, nothing for workshops and conferences. That brings us to City of Forest Lake. Member Christensen or Member Tyson?
Go ahead, I'll go. Yeah, I went, well, I listened, watched online the meetings on March 24th. And just a couple of things, the Park Commission is back up and running, so that's exciting news. The Lake Center for Youth and Families, Dr. Linda Mattson gave an annual update to the city council, which was very interesting. Lots to talk about there, but one of the takeaways is they're having a fundraiser. It's called Taste of the Lakes, May 1st at Tanner's Brook. And I don't have the exact time. I feel like it's in the early evening, I'm not positive. But if you would like to support.
It's a board meeting night.
Thank you. I knew, yep, it's a board meeting night. Anyway, if you're not on the Board and you want to go to that. And then they also discussed the Hidden Creek South Concept Plan Review. So this is an extension of the Headwaters. If I understood correctly, there's about 173 new lots. Some will be detached townhomes. Some smaller lots, some lower-priced homes, and some possible parkland and space to go along with that. And then in the next phase, there'll be another 45 lots. And that was kind of the main highlights. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Member Tyson, anything to add?
Yeah, I just want to add that the North Environmental Center is open to Forest Lake residents. It's that very nice-looking building on 61 and Headwaters Parkway. I was asked if we were building a new school building when that was going up, but it's open and it's ready. It's open every day but Sunday. And then I also wanted to mention that former council, Forest Lake City Council, Jim Dufour, when I became elected, he was a very good mentor to me. He, they are having a benefit for Jim at the American Legion on April 26th. And it'll be from 3:00 to 7:00. And then there's music from 4:00 to 9:00. And then the special presenter is Donna Valentine. She's a radio celebrity from 1071 MyTalk and a good friend of theirs. So I hope everybody can turn out to support Jim Dufour. He was an excellent supporter of the schools in his two terms on the city council. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Brings us to MSBA. Member Tyson?
Well, I have my book that came out, and I know all the Board members received it. And inside here, if you haven't had a chance to look, is Superintendent and I were admiring the photo. There's our Forest Lake Cancer Choir with Mr. Gudry that did the excellent providing of the entertainment. And also up above is, we met Mickey Smith Jr., and he won a Grammy Award. He's a presenter that's just phenomenal, very inspirational. He's also a musician. So we will be having him for our opening when our teachers come back in the fall this year. The other thing I wanted to draw your attention to, if you can read it, MSBA did a survey. We surveyed all the districts in the state. There's 350 that are in MSBA's membership. And it came out with some great information, but what bubbled to the top was financial, the survey, the financial strains on the public school system as well as staffing issues. So there's great information here by Gary Lee, the Deputy Director. So I hope you all get to look at that. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Tyson. That brings us to the superintendent report. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And a couple of you, Member Christensen, Member Revillane, you mentioned the elementary boundary work that has been underway for the last several months. I will, will hold off on those slides for a minute, if we can, sorry about that. So we have been doing a lot of work on our boundary work. I've been providing updates at each of the Board meetings. I didn't bring out tonight, but I've got probably 15 rolls of nine iterations of boundary adjustments. We could probably cover two walls in this room of the work that we've done. Only to speak to the depth of analysis that we've been undertaking through this work. We've had two input meetings with our staff, parent team, and community members. They've had a chance to look at the design teamwork that has generated all of those maps. And the input team has provided incredible information and valuable input for us. We actually scheduled our third meeting, because as was mentioned earlier, through the meeting that we had with the mayors and the city administrators, as we presented our maps and housing development, Hugo, Forest Lake, and Lina Lakes all said, I don't think you've captured all the housing. And the reason for that is the analysis looks at what's on the website, what's publicly available, and things are moving rapidly. And even since that study was done, there's other developments that have come forward in these communities. So Director Renberg-Aide and I visited each of those administrators in the same week that we had the meeting, or the very next week, because we needed to make sure we had that information, because it is significant. For instance, we learned in Forest Lake, or in Hugo, rather, there's a development coming that we didn't have with 400 more homes. That will impact where we put lines. So we got really good information. We have redrawn lines from all that data and that information. We think we're very close. So we scheduled our next and hopefully final meeting with our input team. The team as a whole's been very complimentary of the work, and they've been very valuable. And all of that to say that we're on track to bring a boundary adjustment recommendation to the Board at the May 1st Board meeting. So unless our input team says, timeout, go back to the drawing board, which I don't anticipate, but that's why we have them there. Again, we're on track for, for May 1st. It's been fascinating and very informative work. A number of you mentioned BizTown, so I've got that on my list. All I would add to the conversation that was already stated is, the fifth graders are the groups, Member Entonson, as you pointed out, are the group of kids that go to BizTown, where they actually engage in a model government, model city, and take on the various roles of the city. That begins with the leadership work that our fifth graders do through the Leadership Training Leadership Lab. And then they bring those leadership skills in and partner with the junior achievement. Lab. And then they bring those leadership skills in and partner with the junior achievement who sponsors BizTown and brings those civic skills and leadership skills to that program. A very, very valuable program. As Mr. Fox, Principal Fox, mentioned, MCA testing is now underway. So we will be cheering our kids along as they take the reading, math, and science tests over the next five to six weeks. And we'll be eager to see their results as those move forward. I would point out that that'll be, albeit a very, very important measure for us, it's not the only measure of impact that our schools are having and growth that our kids are achieving in our schools. As we saw with our sad students, the ability to engage publicly and speak publicly is a critical skill, not measured by the MCA. The ability to go to the Lions and get money out of them and engage with local civic leaders, again, extremely valuable skills, not measured on the MCA, but really critical. The ability to collaborate and problem solve and lead their peers, really critical skills that are important to all of us, that we pay attention to, in addition to kids reading and their math skills and their science skills. Critical skills, but those other skills equally critical. Lastly, on April 25th, I have in my weekend update the Bethel Concert at Benson Grade Hall in Roseville. That's 7:30 PM, the annual Bethel Concert with our top music groups from the high school. It is a must-attend in terms of the talent and the entertainment value, so, and the kids would love to see you there. So please mark your calendar. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Massey. Brings us to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that any member would like to pull? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Brings us to action items donation. Member Christiansen?
Yes. Again, we have a wonderful list of very generous community members. So we have $11,262.65 from the Forest Lake Dance Team Booster Club to pay for uniforms. We have $500 from Jesse Johnson Insurance for the Hall of Fame 2025 event. $500 from Olson Sewer Service, again, for the Hall of Fame 2025 event. $100 from the Hugo American Legion Post 620 for the FFA chapter. A donation of a flute from Luis Gabriela Juarez for the middle school for classroom use. And on the second page, all of these are very generous donations to our Ranger Space Camp. So $2,000 from Shervang, the Doran Hardware Company. $1,000 from the Forest Lake VFW Post 4210. $500 from the Columbus Lions. $500 from the American Legion. $500 from Jamie Lem. $500 from Columbus Lions. $500 from the Columbus Lions. $450 from Mark and Gina Malozzi. I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, I'm sorry. $250 from the Episcopal Homes of Minnesota. $200 from Cynthia Barzness. $200 from Theodore Elmquist. $150 for Room for Growing. $100 from A.D. Malozzi, Ph.D. $100 from Dorothy Harmon, and $100 from the Ryan Sandstrom and family, all for Ranger Space Camp. A total of donation and goods is $17,162.65. I move to approve with gratitude.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Well...
I just wanted to add quickly that, you know, thanking everybody for this overwhelming generosity that we receive monthly for our donations. But I also want to just thank, in particular, Jesse R. Johnson Insurance and Olson Sewer for their generosity since the inception of the Hall of Fame. And I think it's really important to highlight that the graduates in our district and where they move on to in their careers. And they've just, since its inception, been donating to that. So I thank them and I appreciate it greatly.
All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Motion carries. Brings us to 8.3, 2025, 2026 Budget Adjustment and Right Sizing. Dr. Massey?
We do, uh, eight, two?
Retirement. No, retirements.
Oh, 8.2, sorry, I checked that out. Forest Lake Area Schools Staff Retirements. Is that, Member Christiansen?
Oh, sure. We have two retirements. Karen Owens, Special Education Paraprofessional at Forest View Elementary for 32 years of service. That's amazing. Kimberly Young Jacobson, the SAC Site Manager at Lino Lakes Elementary for 33 years of service. Also amazing. And then just a correction, last month, we had talked about the head custodian at Scandia, Mr. Greg Balco, was incorrectly said he had 20 years of service. He had 25 years of service. So thank you so much for the longevity of our staff here and wish them well in retirement.
All right, we have a motion.
So move.
Second.
All right, would we approve? Any discussion? All right, I'll just add, I tried not to let him retire, but we came back to it. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we are at the 2025, 2026 Budget Adjustment and Right Sizing. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next two items actually tie together and is the culmination of a great deal of work by our administrative team. I'd like to commend the hours upon hours that our administrative team puts into developing our next year's budget and how to right-size based on enrollment. And then all the staffing decisions that come with staffing the school district for the next school year. It's painstaking work. It's tedious, it's difficult. A lot of heart goes into that work, and I commend our team for the amazing work. The first part of that is to analyze where our budget sits as we start to prepare for the '25, '26 school year. And of course, that begins with an analysis of our revenue, which, as you know, ties directly to our student enrollment, our main driver of revenue for the school district. And as you know, the last 15 years, we've been on a bit of a declining enrollment trend. We have, for the last number of years, and we, again, next year, would anticipate a decline of 100 students. It's been, it didn't materialize this year at 100, and I'll get to that in just a minute. But I think a safe bet is to anticipate due to declining birth rates primarily, a loss of 100 students. It's a conservative approach to anticipating revenue. I think it's a safe way to go, and that would be our, our approach as we begin to build the budget for next year. So with that in mind, we need to right-size our system, if you will allow me to use that word, for fewer kids. We, we should not spend as if we still have the same kids that we do this year and the next year. So we have to right-size our system to account for that. So the target for the loss of 100 students would be equivalent to a one and a quarter million dollar reduction. That would be the loss of revenue. $1.25 million would be the loss of revenue tied to the loss of 100 students. So with that number in mind, I would walk you through the items that get us to a right size and an adjustment of one and a quarter million dollars. And those would include, first, due to the work this board did earlier this year with the consolidation of Forest Lake Elementary and Forest View, we knew that that was enrollment-driven, but also an opportunity to capture some efficiency and cost savings in the district. Now that we have spent many months planning for the consolidation of Forest Lake and Forest View, and the staff necessary to staff Forest View, we believe the total capture of savings is half a million dollars through the closing of Forest Lake Elementary. So that begins to offset one and a quarter million dollar right-sizing effort and target that we've set for ourselves. As I mentioned, enrollment this year is better than we anticipated, which is extremely encouraging. And we believe that adjusting our right sizing at a quarter million dollars due to improved enrollment is a bit conservative, but a, a good target to contribute to the right sizing effort. In addition, we would be recommending the reduction of four high school assistant coaching positions for $24,050. A transition from Canvas, Student Learning Management Tool, to Google Classroom is a savings of $28,500. The elimination of Grade Guardian is $12,400 savings. A cost transfer to food service, $80,000. Essentially what that is, the food service is a different fund code, not the general fund. And due to the fund balance that we have in food service, we're now able to shift legitimate and real cost, operational cost to food service. Think about noon duty supervisors, custodians, utility costs that are related to the food service operation are appropriately assigned to the food service fund. So we're going to capture $80,000 of cost transfer to the food service fund. The reduction of one technology specialist would be a $30,000 savings. And then the remaining portion of the one and a quarter million dollars is $225,000, and that's equivalent to five FTE or teaching equivalent positions. So those would be the items that we would provide for you tonight and recommend your approval as a way to right-size their budget at the level of $1,250,000.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve 8.3.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
What is Grade Guardian?
Grade Guardian is a tool that Member Jacobson may be more familiar with. Mr. Caldwell may be more familiar with that than, than I am. Take it away.
Great question. Member Castle, Grade Guardian is a tool that is often used in secondary English classrooms and others. When students are submitting papers, they submit it through Grade Guardian. No, no, no. My apologies. I'm back in both hands. Thank you for catching me. Yep, different software, Member Castle. Grade Guardian is a tool that integrates with Canvas, that helps us harvest data from Canvas, our learning management system, on which students have logged in recently, which students are doing well, which students are struggling in a multiple different... It creates a dashboard that administrators and deans and counselors can look at and get a sense of, here are some students that we need to jump in and intervene with pretty quickly. Since we're letting go of Canvas as our learning management system, this becomes no longer a need for us, and so we'd be letting go of both of them at the same time.
So is the Google Classroom have similar...
It has similar, not, maybe not to the same degree, but similar features. Google Classroom is something we already pay for as part of our Google for Workspace suite. So it would, transitioning to Google Classroom does not incur any new costs for us.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Assistant coaches, is that something that we're hoping will be picked up by PTOs? Or, like, fundraised? I mean, is that, I mean, I'm just wondering about how that will be?
Yeah, booster clubs could certainly pick those up. That wouldn't be our expectation to place upon them. They certainly would have that.
Okay. They have an opportunity to pay for that if they'd like to.
That's right.
Okay. That's my question.
Member Haglund?
Just to piggyback on the Member Corcoran's question, do we have which coaches, you know, athletic activities those are targeting, or is it just a general statement of elimination of work?
Principal Caldwell and Activities Director Mike Kenon did that analysis, and I think they've earmarked the, the sports that that would...
We actually have six positions that are identified, so there's technically two on the show, but Mike's going to work with each of the ones that he's identified, and the coaches, some of them are right sizing. We have less enrollment or less participation in that activity, so it's going back to what it used to be. We do have thresholds that when more students go into those activities, where we would add those coaches. But oftentimes, those coaches get added and we forget to take them away when the participation goes down. What we're really doing is getting them back to where they need to be, so bear in mind with participation points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Tyson?
I have a question. Could you go a little, just a little bit more in-depth about the food service transfer? Is that something new that we're able to do?
No, we have done that in previous years.
Or have we done that before?
And there's criteria in terms of fund balance that the fund would need to have in order for us to be allowed to do that with the Minnesota Department of Education.
Okay.
We are at a threshold now where we have the ability to do that.
Okay.
And again, we're transferring really, they have to be certainly related to the food service operation.
Right, correct.
And these are certainly costs that are associated with the food service program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm very pleased and happy, I'm sure everyone is, to look at the improved enrollment, and that's really exciting. And, you know, I hate to see the last bullet point there, the five position reduction. In the listening session that we just had a couple hours ago, we were talking about, you know, large class sizes at the elementary and difficulty finding subs. And, I mean, so that's always a really tough one to swallow, although, I mean, I suppose it could be worse. So, I mean, it's, you know, to the new board members, you know, this is probably one of the least fun, you know, meetings of the year. But this is, this is what it looks like to have cuts, you know? This is, this is, this is what it looks like. So, you know, just to keep that in mind.
Member Tyson?
So to Member Christiansen's point, it is a sad day. This is like one of the dreaded meetings, correct? But with those reductions, can you, where, what buildings are they be, or do we even know yet?
I would have to get through and present all of our staffing model. It's all enrollment-driven in order to create equitable class sizes the best we can across the district. And they're spread across multiple buildings.
Okay.
And in some cases, this would be driven by attrition as well, when we have staff members leave. So we're not necessarily doing layoffs, layoffs here.
Yeah, my, there are layoffs due to position availability at different grade levels, licensure-dependent. And then enrollment shifts over the summer, and dependent upon staff who might leave between now and the start of next year, or enrollment increases in kindergarten or elsewhere, there may be a need to shift positions or pull people back who might have been given news today that their position was not available. So there are a number of factors that play into staffing from here forward.
Member Christiansen was right, though. This is a, April's always a difficult time on the board. Member Corcoran?
I was going to say, we've been through this many, many times, and this is, it's never easy, but we've seen it much, much worse over many years. I mean, at the beginning of this whole process, the number was a lot bigger than this, as far as staff reduction. So I'm, it's not great, great to see this at all, but it started up a lot worse to me in my eyes, if my memory serves me right. So five, it could be, I mean, to me, it could be a lot worse. So I'm thankful that you guys have really worked and been really creative with your, you know, trying to find ways that didn't affect staffing so much. And I really appreciate that. And I'm sure the students and staff will appreciate that, too. So thank you.
And as always, our thoughts and prayers are with those families, because that does get the whole family.
Oh, it's horrible.
It's hard, and we hope that they're able to find employment in other areas rapidly. It's a tough time right now. But this is the reality of being in a district where enrollment is, is going down. We do have to be conscious of that. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Member Clark, would you please take a roll call?
Yes. Okay, Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Revoline?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Haglund?
Aye.
Member Antonson is aye. Member Castle?
Aye.
Member Christiansen?
Aye.
All right, just piggybacks on that. 8.4, Adopt Resolution Relating to the Termination and Nonrenewal of Probationary Teachers. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm passing out to you the list of probationary staff that due to position availability, evaluation and observation, performance, other factors, perhaps related to licensure, and those kind of things, this list is created. And I present this list as the list of reductions of probationary staff members. And this effort would essentially terminate their contract going into the next school year. An administration would recommend your approval. An administration would recommend your approval.
All right, we'll take a moment to absorb the list here, and then we'll just need a motion.
And I would advise that we, we're not going to discuss individual names on this list.
All right, would it entertain a motion for approval?
Move to approve eight four. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Member Castle?
How do these fit in with this list over here?
Yeah, again, some of these positions, for instance, some of these folks are Title One instructors, and that's an annual ending of that contract, because those are one-year positions. A number of those are title folks, other licensure pieces, position availability, performance-based for some. So in, amongst this list will be that five-position reduction, and then the title positions based on title funding going into the next year, some may come back, higher other positions, and so on.
All right, Member Tyson?
Well, and I just want to add that it is a very difficult thing to see, you know, it's a very uncertain time, and losing your job regardless of the reason, it's just a sad thing to see. It's difficult.
Any other discussion? All right, we do wish all of these individuals well. Member Clark, will you please take your roll call?
I will. Okay, Member Christensen?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rebeline?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Haglund?
Aye.
Member Antonson?
Aye.
And Member Castle?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Motion is adopted. Eight dot five, Award Medical Self-Inured Employee Group Insurance Director Renberg Idi.
Thank you. As you may remember, when you gave us permission to go out and bid, the medical plan has to be bid every two years according to the HITA Act, and so what we are here to do tonight is talk about the results. So the RFP went out to multiple groups back in January. Best and final offers were opened up by the administration and three representatives from the largest bargaining group on February 14th, and Alora Blazer from National Insurance Services is going to talk us through the bids that came in.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, for having me today. My name is Alora Blazer. I am from National Insurance Services. We are the broker who is retained by the district to conduct your bids. So that, as Chrissy mentioned, that is a, every two years, we go out to bid for HITA to meet our constituent, our required bid statute, and we did receive six bid responses during this bid cycle. We received responses from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Health Partners, Health EZ, Pete Sourcewell, and UMR, who is our current third-party administrator of our medical benefit package. As Chrissy mentioned, we then did do a best and final, which allows those bidders opportunity to really sharpen their pencil. And you can see, we do have a comparison of the bid results at the bottom. Really, what we're looking at is a variety of components of our benefit package that we are paying for as a self-insured entity. We are on a 12-18 contract, and that means that our claims that are incurred within our 12-month period starting July 1st and that are paid within 18 months are eligible for coverage under our insurance. So that is what that contract type is referring to at the top. We looked at, when we reviewed the bid options, the maximum claims liability that the district would be responsible for. So in that blue bar there, you can see our current maximum claims liability, and then our respective bid offers that came in. The good news is that they were all below our current max liability. The max claim liability is really the underwriters telling us, based on our claims experience, where do we think your claims will come in, in the future 12-month period? And then there is a ceiling that they put in place that protects us as an entire group. That's called our aggregate stop-loss insurance. With this bid cycle, we were able to reduce that ceiling to 120% of where we expect our claims to come in. That maximum claim liability represents the maximum the district is responsible for under the self-insured plan. Anything above that is re-insured by the carrier. So that maximum claims liability is listed there. We then have to account for our fixed costs. There are a number of components that are factored into that. There's administrative costs for the payment of our claims, medical and pharmacy, and then also our premiums for that stop-loss insurance that provides our protection. So we have the aggregate, which again, covers our entire population, and we also have specific stop-loss, which protects us. We don't pay more than anything on our specific deductible on any one claimant on our plan. So those premiums all go into those fixed costs, and then at the bottom, we have our max cost. That's adding our max claims liability and our administrative costs together. So when we look at the very bottom, that's really looking at our maximum position. Again, with the bid process, we were able to reduce that maximum position. You can see on our current, at 13.2 million, we had a number of competitive bids across the board, with Health EZ coming in the most competitive with their max claim costs at $10.67 million, representing a substantial savings over our current, which is why we're here tonight, to make the carrier recommendation to Award, to Health EZ.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
How long have they been around, Health EZ? Is that some, I've never...
Health EZ, that's a great question. They've been in business for over 40 years.
Oh, a long time.
Yes, and they're actually located right in Bloomington. You'd probably drive by their building if you're, if you're on 494 right in Bloomington there. They, they sold, they're a TPA, a third-party administrator, so they have a ton of business nationally. The TPA model is a little bit newer to our market here in Minnesota, which is why they may not be as familiar to you, but they are not a new entity from a business perspective. And we did vet thoroughly references during our bid and analysis process.
Yeah, that's, I've never heard of them. That's why I wanted to make sure. I have some new name for them.
That is a great question.
The numbers are wonderful. I'm, great to see that, great savings, so, great job. That's wonderful.
Member Christensen?
I have a question. I'm wondering, how does this affect our employees? Are they, do they, and forgive me, I don't know, but are they changing doctors or changing clinics if we're going to a different place, or is this a behind-the-scenes, just does...
That's a great question. We're really making a change to who's administering our plan, so it doesn't change the benefits. There are minimal network, we did an analysis of the network overlap. There were very few providers who were not already within the Health EZ network, and they're working on contracting those providers in, during this installment process, so we accept very minimal disruption. So this is really us, from an administrative perspective, making an adjustment.
We were able to send the listing out of doctors, and they actually go by clinic, not by doctor, so we sent out the clinic information to our benefits committee and had everyone check their stuff, and so we were able to get anything back. We did have two people report that they had some mental health things that practitioners that were not on the list, and so Health EZ has already contacted them. So, and we've learned that, because one of them is somebody who we work a lot with in the district, so it was great.
Okay, thank you.
Member Tyson?
One quick question. With Health EZ then, as the person that distributes the, how long are we under contract with them?
We are, we have a one-year commitment to them.
One-year commitment.
So we have the ability to renew with them, but we are not locked into a multi-year contract.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Member Corcoran?
Do we do it two, is it every two years? Are we required to do every two years? I mean, what is our requirement?
It's required to do every two years, but we can, so we'll do the one, and they have actually a 90% renewal rate, Health EZ does, with people, so with their clients. So we anticipate that we will go the second year, which, so, but if, if, so this is something that we went through when we had our last carrier change, it was not as successful, and we knew that almost right away, that the level of customer service that we were getting was not matched with what we had expected or needed, and, but we were in a two-year commitment. So this was a way for us to say, you know what, it is that important that they prove themselves as the high-quality provider that we're hearing that they are, and so we did the one year, and then, well, can we do it for the second?
Very good. That's great.
Member Haglund?
So who is going to administer the transition if there's claims outstanding between the old insurer and the new insurer, so that, make sure that all the claims are settled and there's, isn't any issues with people having their claims paid or settled?
Absolutely. That, NIS, as the insurance broker, we assist Chrissy and the administrative team with the transition. There's a number of pieces of implementation that help to ease that, things like transferring prior authorizations that are already on file, things like that, that we do to make sure the transition process is very smooth. So it's a, it's a process that we are familiar with, and we will really hand-hold to ensure minimal disruption. Health EZ has made significant commitments to being able to be available to help with any questions or needs that we had during the transition, so we will handle that with extreme care.
We had preferred one for a very long time in this district, I think over a decade, and so when we transitioned last year over to UMR, we learned a lot. So we know the process, and again, working with NIS this time, too, we're very confident that it will be a smooth transition.
Thank you.
All right, Member Castle?
So the transition costs that will be incurred next year, if we re-up, then this fixed cost should go down?
So we do, we do have some administrative run-out costs, but there are some, there are some funds we were able to obtain through the bid process to help offset those costs. So this just truly captures our administrative costs relative to claims payment and those respective stop-loss coverages.
So, but my question is really that, so you're either eating costs for the transition, where next year, there doesn't need to be a transition if we go with Health EZ again. So then wouldn't these fixed costs be reduced because of that?
It is, we will receive a renewal from Health EZ, but I guess what I'm, to clarify, these fixed costs don't represent the transition costs. These are just looking at our actual administrative costs in the upcoming 12-month period.
Okay, so that will be an additional cost?
Yes, but we did receive dollars to help offset that transition, so the financial burden of the transition is not on the district.
Nice.
All right, Member Corcoran?
When does this, when does the transition happen? Is it July 1st? July 1st. Next.
All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, no discussion on the motion. Member Clark, will you please take a roll call?
I will. Okay, Member Castle?
Aye.
Member Christensen?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rebeline?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Haglund?
Aye.
And Member Antonson is aye. The ayes have it.
All right, motion carries. Without objection, we'll adjourn for five minutes.
Okay.
...days of in-person debriefs. We work with our teachers to spread those four days out because there's an equal amount of time that they need to do between each day in terms of seat work, reading, online modules, these sorts of things. This year, the board added a day in April, April 21st, that's coming up here in a few weeks for this year's plan, to make room for that last debrief of the year. This calendar adjustment for next year would add that same day of PD for K-5 elementary only. You'll notice it on the calendar as Friday, May 22nd. We placed it there in part to give families of elementary students, if they so wish, an opportunity to combine that with Memorial Day weekend and that Monday, on Monday, May 25th. So that would be our opportunity to complete that last in-person training for Phase 1 educators going through Volume 2 of the REDACT training.
I might add that this calendar was initially approved two years ago when letters wasn't a thing and our sixth graders to the middle school wasn't a thing. So we're being flexible and adjusting to those emerging changes to our system. We don't like to change the calendars. Families set their family lives based on our school calendar. We know that. We think these are minimally impactful to families. We paid attention to that. Having that letters conversion day later in the year after the MCA testing window capturing as much instructional time as possible and tying that to the Memorial Day break as well.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Member Haglund.
So, looking at the October dates with the staggered start dates for the 6th, 7th, and 8th, and then 9th through 12th, are the 6th and 9th grade students getting two more additional school days, instructional days for the year, and the 8th grade are just meeting what the requirement is? Or how is that being balanced out for that they're hitting all their instructional hours for the year?
Yeah, we have room. We always build additional days into our calendar for our students. So if we run into a snow day or some sort of inclement weather need to cancel school, we've got a buffer built in. We will still have a buffer in for all of our students, including 8th grade. No students, the only change really for the calendar will be for 8th grade students. 8th grade students would lose a day, so they would probably be the tightest on hours, but we're still within the range of that. We would be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Do you know how many snow days we built into this calendar?
We, through board action, we've identified the first two inclement weather day cancellations are the traditional snow days we all grew up with. And then every day thereafter is an e-learning day, up to five, provided by the state.
Okay, so we have quite a bit of flexibility there.
Yep, and the e-learning days count as instructional days where the pure snow days do not. If we exceed those two and the five, we're in a make-up day scenario.
Okay, any other questions? Member Tyson?
Could you clarify, what are the required days? 187, and we do 189, or?
We have a three-day, two or three-day cushion. I'd have to look at the chart we have on a document. And they vary from kindergarten has a different requirement than first grade through elementary kids and secondary students. It varies, but we're, we have that cushion built in.
Great. I knew we did.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I like the changes. I think it gives everybody that opportunity, especially with the new students, the fifth and the sixth, and everybody can, that extra day of getting used to the schools. I think it's great.
You recall a lot of conversation with our parent meetings around 6th grade, that that transition, taking care of the social, emotional needs of kids as they transition from that elementary environment to the middle school environment, doing it in a small way. So they'll be the only kids in the school that very first day, becoming familiar with the, their classes, their schedule, their lockers, and those things. So I think it's got a lot of value in terms of starting the year right and then reaping those benefits throughout the school year.
Absolutely. I think both of these are well worth changing our calendar for.
Yep, I agree.
Very important.
I'm sure it provides a lot of comfort to staff as well to just kind of ease into the year, especially at the middle school, the changes coming. All right, if there are no other questions, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. That brings us to 8.8, travel expense reimbursement policy, Dr. Massey.
This policy pertains to the reimbursement of, to school board, excuse me, school board to reimburse employees for expenses incurred and authorized travel where such travel is deemed to be of value to the school district. The change you'll see there, and we're seeking your approval of tonight, is related to the classification for airfare, choosing a classification that permits a passenger to check a bag, and then, of course, updating the meal reimbursement piece on Item 3, 3D. With those changes, administration recommends approval.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. 8.9, emergency closing of schools and activities cancellation policy, 608, Dr. Massey.
Yeah, there's a recommended change in Item 2 of the policy. Currently, on a school cancellation day, no activities can be scheduled until after 6:00 PM at the discretion of the superintendent. And that's not all that practical when you think of a cold weather day cancellation like we have this year. The temperatures by 1:00 PM or 2:00 PM are in a range where it's safer for kids to attend a competition or come to practice. Same on a snow day, we could have really good roads by 2:00 PM, yet activities can't start according to this pass until 6:00 PM. So it would give discretion to the superintendent, the administrative team, to make a determination for when after-school activities could resume if the weather permits. Administration would recommend your approval.
All right, motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Member Haglund?
One question for the superintendent. So I understand this would cover any varsity athletics, but does this also affect any, like, FLAW or any of the youth athletic organizations if they would be able to hold advanced hockey comes to mind? Would this affect, of course, like hockey's ability to have games or practices in the sports center if schools opposed?
Yeah, we, we do not, through our policies and our cancellations dictate when, when they can hold practices. The independent leagues, FLAW, Hockey Association, they'd be independent of this policy.
Okay.
Unless we shut down the ICE arena, then they don't have access. But we would, we would not be making that decision for them.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, I do have a question myself. I like this. I like that it opens it up, gives us the possibility to run some of these after-school programs. I think there's a great benefit in that. My only question or concern would be is there's no, no timing in here, no real communication in here. How do we let students know? How do we, is there a time that we want to cut off and say the decision is made by, or we assume canceled? I'd throw that back to Dr. Massey just for his guidance on that.
Yeah, my thinking there would be, when we make the decision to cancel school, we're paying attention to what the forecast is, what the prediction is for temperature or snow. And we would likely make that decision at the same time of closure. And that's when we typically communicate around activities as well. So I'm not concerned about a timeline there. I think it's best to package all that together so we're not sending multiple communications. In other words, school is canceled, after-school activities would resume at 4:00 PM or 5:00 PM, or continue as scheduled. We'd make that call at the time of cancellation.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that. I don't feel that we need to be overly directive in the policy unless experience shows us otherwise. So with that, we have a motion, we have a second. So any other discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Brings us to 9.1, the first reading, recommendation to approve the 2026-2027 academic calendar.
Thank you Chair Rebulae, members of the board, Dr. Massey. A moment ago, we were talking about next year's calendar. What we're talking about and what you see in front of you is the year after, 2026-2027. This is typically when we like to approve our calendars at least 12 months out, so parents can get their brains wrapped around plans for how they want to use the calendar during, to do family activities on days off. What you saw on the previous calendar was the earliest possible date in which Labor Day can fall. What you see on this calendar is the last possible date in which Labor Day can fall. So what we looked at doing here was having the start of the school year happen on Monday, August 31st, and then having a full week of school before Labor Day on Monday, September 7th. Doing this allows us to get out last day of school with graduation happening the first week of June. We put together these calendars for newer members of the board in a committee that involves teachers and others that look at the calendar, make recommendations. We typically try to stay similar or consistent with how we've built calendars in the past. This particular element would be an inconsistency in terms of starting before Labor Day. We've done that before. We did it during a heavy construction year several years ago, and we did that, and I thought we did that well. So the calendar here would allow us to have school not go into the middle parts of June, but instead start and have a full week of school the first week of September, a little bit of a break on Monday, September 7th for Labor Day, last day of school for students on Thursday, June 3rd, last day for staff on Friday, June 4th. And this, administration would recommend approval. But this is a first reading, so this is an opportunity to look at this, and we can bring this back before the board at a later meeting.
I was just going to add that. Thank you Director Jameson. This is a first reading, so if there are any questions today, we can entertain questions. Member Castle.
There were some statutory considerations with going before Labor Day. Is that correct?
Yeah, yet to be determined or put into law. So we're paying attention to that. It's policy, and I've seen it in all the policy bills, as being approved. It's likely to be approved, but we haven't seen that yet. So this would preempt that or allow us to move forward with board approval.
Yeah, current statute does allow our district to start prior to Labor Day should we need to, but things can change. Member Corcoran.
For me, I never liked it because of family travel before school starts. I know it's, August is a big month for people to travel before Labor Day. I just know it's a pass. My kids are always in sports, so August is like the only month that we could actually travel. So that, I, I mean, I always struggled with the Labor Day problem. So that was just me. I would never, I never wanted to vote for a calendar that started before Labor Day. But that's just me personally, and my kids aren't in school anymore. So I don't know how anyone else feels about it, and if families are really strong about it, but I understand that it is late. I do get the June problem of kids wanting, getting restless and wanting to get out of school in June. So that's my, my concern. And of course, the state fair. People work in the fair.
Well, I just wanted to add that when I worked in the buildings and school year did run late, it got really hot, and the kids get uncomfortable, and they just don't want to be in there. I know we have a little more air conditioning than we used to, but I think when the temperatures go up in mid-June, it's really uncomfortable for teachers and staff. And another thing I wanted to add is that, I forgot.
We can come back?
You can come back.
Member Tyson.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I think if we go ahead and do this, I mean, it does make sense, but if we just explain to parent, and I know everyone's busy, so I just feel like no one's going to pay attention until like the summer before, and then they're going to go, oh my gosh, you know. So if we can just sort of double down on communication to parents and families, just so they understand, and I mean, you can only tell it to them so much, but, you know, just really try to make sure everybody understands what's happening and the reason it's happening. This is a one, you know, one-time deal. Labor Day is really late. So I agree, you know, August is an important time, unless you're in fall sports, and then you don't go anywhere in August either. So that's all.
Sports, right.
Member Haglund?
Director Jameson, have you looked at the potential of the '27-'28 school calendar? So if for some reason, either through the legislature or just the board decides not to go with this, and we do start on the 8th, what would that do to us ending in June 11th? Would we start school then on September 2nd or 3rd of the '27-'26 school year and have a really, really short summer break?
Yeah, I, we have not, Member Haglund, we have not looked at the '27-'28 school year. So I don't even know that I could tell you off the top of my head when.
I think that'd be an important thing to consider.
September 6.
Summer will be a week shorter.
Or potentially two weeks, depending on where Labor Day falls.
It's September 6th and 2027.
So it's late enough.
Still late.
One week.
Just a month.
Yes, we start on the 7th.
I did think of my question. If we extend out into June, does that affect our ESY, our summer school? Or could it?
It would delay the start of summer school.
Okay.
And then, as thus, it would extend it further into the summer than it would otherwise be if we were to start early.
Okay. It's another thing to think about.
It's a good time.
All right, Member Ann, can send it up?
Well, I like what Member Christensen said about, you know, communicating it preemptively, and, you know, I think it's just one year, and sometimes we've got to do some things like this. You guys have figured it out nicely, but, you know, I don't know if it's feasible to, when you publish the next year's school calendar, also tag this one on behind, I don't know, on the website? I don't know how feasible that is?
Yeah, once approved, this will open our website.
Oh, okay, for this year too. Okay.
On that note, would it be feasible for our principals in their Friday communication to share with families even tomorrow, saying that the board is considering this? It's up for a vote next month. But I would love to hear some family feedback, and it seems like a good way to get it out to our families.
Let us have that conversation and see if there's an effective way to get that information out, whether it's survey form or what that looks like.
Okay.
And I'll report back.
All right, yeah.
Also sounds like the next year's going to be the same.
I was just going to say.
Same next year.
Yes.
It's going to be the same Labor Day next year.
I was just looking at that, thinking that this could be, should we decide to adopt this, this could be a two-year.
Yeah, it could be.
A two-year plan. So I would really be curious to see what families think of this. I mean, I look at it as a board member and a parent myself, and I really like it. But like Member Corcoran mentioned, some families are traveling. There's state fair we need to consider. I was always a fall athlete, so I was back in the middle of August anyway, doing two days on the football field. So it would not have affected me at all. It would have been kind of nice to get out a little earlier. So, but everybody's situation is different, so I would love to hear a little bit of feedback on that.
But I think we have to remember the reasons too. Like Member Anderson said, there are really good reasons to be doing that, and they've been given a lot of thought and consideration.
Yeah, and the quarter breaks fall really nicely on this calendar, and you too as well, the way that they've built it. So that's something we want to keep in mind as well. All right, any other, Member Castle?
Well, and this happens every five or six years, depending on if there's one or two years in between. So we should be able to reflect on history.
Definitely not unprecedented.
Yeah, the only other time I remember making this adjustment is when we were going into construction, significant construction.
I remember that.
And then we adjusted the calendar two weeks early. It's a nice calendar, doesn't fit all families, but that was driven by construction.
I mean, the interesting thing is, the feedback I received on that calendar was that people really liked it.
They did.
But perhaps I'm in an echo chamber, where the people that are reaching out to me are the ones that like it, and they want to express that. The ones that don't are just living with it. So, I don't know. All right, any other questions or discussions on this? All right, we can move to 9.2, the first reading on the harassment and violence policy, 425, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a learning environment and working environment that is free from harassment, violence, and malicious and sadistic conduct, based on race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, familial status, status with regard to public assistance, sexual orientation, including gender, identity, and disability, protected class, and to prohibit sexual exploitation. This policy requires annual review, and tonight is a first reading. I would point you to two components. Yeah, first reading, right? Yeah, first reading, thank you. The first piece would be related to the definitions. There's an added component to the disability definition that states that also included in disability would be an impairment that is episodic or in remission and would materially limit a major life activity when active. So that would be an included component of the definition. The other change or recommended addition or modification of a policy would be Item 5, which would be a definition for the identified and listed protected class of religion, with the definition being added to this policy. That definition comes directly from the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and their definition.
All right, thank you, Dr. Massey. This is a first reading, but I do think a motion to commit would be in order.
I'd like to make that motion.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to commit? Member Anderson.
Sure. So I just, when I first read through this, and I have half of it right here, it's in my book, but I just, I'm still kind of hazy on why, because this is a specific policy for harassment and violence as it relates to all the protected classes, why only some of them are in here and defined. And I don't, and I got an email a couple of days ago from a community member who was asking why if we're going to define religion, then we should be like defining creed. And so I just kind of think that maybe we should have them all defined in here, because it does not ultimately protect or speak to all those protected classes. And I think for me, and I don't think I'm the only one, it makes it confusing to not have them all in here. And I don't know why we wouldn't. So.
Member Castle?
Well, we're supposed to have equal protection under the law. I'm not a fan of classes, period. If somebody stumbles, for whatever reason, and another student or whoever makes fun of them or harasses them, that should not be allowed either. What, I don't get it. I don't get it. This whole class thing, everyone should be equally protected.
I would point out that the classes listed here are statutorily identified protected classes, so it's not an internal identification.
I understand that, but that's against the Constitution. Equal protection is what we should strive for, regardless of these made-up classes.
Yeah. Just pointing out that they come from state and federal statutory classification.
So why can't we cover everybody?
Yeah, the statute is specifically saying towards, I mean, obviously you know that, but I, I, you know, I get it.
The statute on policy generation in this case is very prescriptive, which is why I would support the motion to commit, just to be consistent and to meet unequivocally and undeniably meet the statutory requirement and make it very clear.
Yeah, so.
Member Tyson.
We're required under statute for protecting class. So we can have a policy, but it doesn't matter because we're required to do it anyway. So strengthening the policy is a good idea. Under five, I think it's three. I think that the way that sentence reads is kind of inadvertently exclusive. And I, some research I did, it was worded differently, called, "Religion is a sincerely held, sincerely held religious belief," just simply stated. Instead of values practiced based on teachings of a spiritual leader, religion involves a god or gods.
Yeah, that, this one, my understanding, that's as it's in this for preview, comes directly from the Minnesota Human Rights Act. I know, and then there's several different, like even if you just look it up, several different meanings.
So I guess I just wouldn't be opposed to changing it, is what I'm saying.
Well, I, I think too.
As long as we're committing it.
Yeah, I think too that when we add the definition of creed, that would cover the concern that you have.
Yeah.
Because when you look into the definition of creed through the Minnesota Human Rights Act, it's more encompassing. And I do like Member Castle's point of, really what we want to do is we don't want harassment or violence across our entire district, any student, regardless of who it is or why they are. But at the same time being that we're directed by statute to write this specific policy, I like the idea of being very clear and making those restrictions, or those requirements very clearly. That's just my opinion.
I think it's important to be clear that we are meeting the requirements of the law.
Yes.
What I understand is this would send it back to policy committee to bring more clarity, perhaps more definition, to the protected classes identified in statute.
Correct, yeah. Just consistency, because like, like you say, this, this policy and the policy that we currently have in effect right now does meet the requirements of the law.
Right.
The only thing that, the changes that we're recommending here with the motion to commit would be, just to clarify that and make it consistent. If we're going to define this term, let's, let's define all of the terms that are part of that.
Yeah, well, even, you know, because sometimes we cross-reference and reference something else, like whatever we're using for the definitions. To me, I just think they should either all be on here or say as defined by the Minnesota Human Rights Act or something that makes it clear, you know. Because to me, we have, I don't remember, is there 11 or 13 protected classes that would fall under here and be part of this, but only like half of them are defined. And so I just think that's confusing. And I think if we're going to have it, we should just do it so it's clear.
Cross the board. Member Haglund?
And, you know, I agree with Member Castle. I mean, I don't like classes either. Everybody should be treated the same regardless of anything. And I also agree with Member Anderson in saying that if we're going to list them out to be consistent and have a policy, that we should have them all defined. But I think we should also, the policy committee, my recommendation to the policy committee would be find one source, whether it's the Minnesota Human Rights Act, if it's a federal statute, so that we're not cherry picking one from this, one from here, and then it would give anybody a reason to come back and pick it apart. So whatever the policy committee decides to do with it or to bring back to us to consider, that would be my ask of them, is to be consistent, find one source of truth, and go with that.
All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of sending this back to the policy committee for review signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, motion carries, and we have committed the policy back to policy committee. That brings us to 9.3, first reading, school-sponsored student publications and activities, policy 543, Dr. Massey.
The purpose of this policy is to protect students' rights to free speech and production of official school publications and activities, while at the same time balancing the school district's role in supervising student publications and the operation of public schools. The Minnesota Legislature enacted a statute around student publications. MSBA has developed, updated their policy related to student publications. Those recommendations and from their model policy are included here, and I would ask that you spend some time reviewing those. You'll notice that they're in relation to being clear about what qualifies as student publication. as student publication, a lot of emphasis around free speech and the protection of free speech. Again, what is considered school-sponsored media, differentiated from student speech. Outside of school-sponsored, there's a list of prohibitions as well of what would not be permitted in publication. So a lot of new material here, and I would ask that you spend some time reviewing that. We'll bring it for your approval in May.
All right, thank you. Nine dot four, first reading, credit for learning policy six twenty.
One of the challenges we face when we bring transcripts in from other schools is interpreting credit given in one school and credit given to another, how systems wait grades. The, the Minnesota Legislature has provided some requirements for waiting concurrent enrollment college credit, so that there, there'd be consistency there and providing some benefit to kids who take P S E O or concurrent enrollment courses. Those recommendations and statutory requirements are included in the updated language here, and I would ask that you review them as well, and we'll bring this through your approval in May.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Massey. That brings us to reviewing upcoming calendar dates. Our next board meeting, which includes committee meetings, is on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Set it.
Motion and discussion, any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.